Good afternoon. This is the reading and study session of the booklet, Understanding Korea, Volume Nine, Human Rights. And the event has been organised by the Korean Franchise Association of the UK, Defending People's Career with No ifs or buts, and also by the British Group for the Study of the Juchae idea. And we will just study sections one to twenty-one. I will read out some of the sections and then Comrade Alan Bolland, KFA UK Organisation Secretary, Head of KFA UK, West of England, and also editor of our publication, People's Career Today, will also read out some sections. And then I will set four questions for people to answer. You know, I hope that is very simple and very clear. So, starting at the very beginning and before I start, you know, I think it, one reason why I chose with this book, why we chose this particular booklet is because a major thrust of the propaganda and disinformation against people's career is the issue of human rights. And I just did an interview with a journalist last week, supposedly a left-wing journalist. And this was thrown up about human rights in the DPRK. So I think this study session would be very useful in better understanding the reality of people's career and the system there and refuting hostile propaganda. So, to start at the beginning, section one, DPRK's view on human rights. The DPRK views that human rights are the rights of man to independence, that the masses of people are the genuine personification of human rights and that human rights are precisely the rights of a nation. Two, human rights are the rights to independence. Since human rights are literally the rights of man, the nature of these rights should be defined, starting from the nature of man. Independence is the intrinsic nature of man. Independence is an attribute of the social being to live and develop independently as the master of the world and his own destiny. Independence is the life and soul of man, the social being. Only when independence is ensured can man enjoy life and happiness proper to man, having dignity and value as the social existence. To realise independence, man must have rights for it. Just the human rights. Three, the masses of the people are the genuine personification of human rights. The masses of the people demand the rights to live and develop independently and creatively, free from all fetters of nature, that is, the rights to independence, and have also the capability to achieve them. As historical facts show, all the rights won by the masses in different eras are attributable to their demands and tireless efforts. The rights which are neither raised by the demands of the masses nor realised by their efforts can never be true rights for them. The demand of the social collective for independence is a common demand of its members for the existence and development of their collective. The demand of individual members for independence is the key demands they can make as equal members of the collective and they ought to be guaranteed by their collective. The demand of the masses, the social collective, represents the demand of the social community and coincides with the demand of the individual members of the collective. Human rights demanded and realised by the masses are genuine human rights that satisfy the demand of both the collective and its individual members. Four, human rights are the rights of a nation. When human rights are regarded as the rights of a nation, it means that the sovereignty of the nation, people realise their demands for independence with a national state as the unit. The right to realise this demand is just the national sovereignty. People of all countries in the world exercise their human rights, the right to realise their demand for independence under the institutional and legal guarantee of the country they are living in. When a certain country has lost its sovereignty, it is an empty talk to discuss about the rights of the people in the country and their provision. This is proved by the past colonial history of Korea and the human rights situations in several countries, including Iraq. Five, DPRK's view of the basic rights of man. The West finds the origin of basic rights of man in the Declaration of the Rights of Man and of the Citizen adopted in France on August twenty-seventh, seventeen eighty-nine, and the Declaration of Independence adopted by, in the US, on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six. The former identifies the basic rights of man as, quote, "liberty, property, safety and resistance to oppression", unquote, while the latter defies, identifies them as "life, liberty and pursuit of happiness". Some insist that the rights to peace and environment are the fundamental rights. The DPRK views the basic rights of man as his most important rights, which serve as the basis and source of all his rights. In other words, without these basic rights, the realisation of other rights is unthinkable. Six, basic human rights. Basic human rights include socio-political rights and the rights to dignity, existence and inviolability. Seven, socio-political rights. Socio-political independence is the life and soul of man, the social being. Even though he is alive, man is socially as good as dead if he has not socio-political independence. Socio-political independence is realised through the provision and exercise of the freedom and right to participate in achieving national sovereignty, state administration and socio-political activities, that is, the socio-political rights. If a man fails to become the master of politics, exercising socio-political rights, he cannot be provided with the economic and cultural rights either. This shows that the socio-political rights are the basis of all rights of man and the most important rights which enable him to occupy the position and perform the role as masters of the state and society. Eight, right to dignity. Man is the most dignified and valuable being in the world. Everything in the world has value only when it is geared to raising man as a dignified and precious being and serves him. The dignity and value of man are realised satisfactorily and shine only when he exercises the rights to social and political, socia-, social and personal equality, to free development of individuality and to treatment proper to a human being. Discrimination of personality, whatever the reason, is an insult to the dignity of man and enslavement of men and application of inhuman and dishonourable morality and compulsion constitutes an infringement upon human dignity, the rights of man. Nine, right to existence. Economic life is a field of social life indispensable to the existence and development of man. Only when he has the right in economic life, the right to existence, whose contents are labour and ownership and freely exercised, is it, can man maintain his existence as a human being and enjoy his life. Ten, right to inviolability. Unless the freedom of the person is ensured, man cannot exercise his rights whatsoever. Only when he is guaranteed the right to the inviolability of the person, which is the right not to be detained or arrested without reason, can man exercise his rights to the full. Okay, so I will stop there and then Alan will take over for the next ten and then we will take the questions. So whenever you're ready to start, Alan, please do so.
One second, there's some technical problems here. Just one second. Okay, I'm ready to start. The Establishment of Democratic Labour Law System. In Korea, the labour law was proclaimed by the decision of the Provisional People's Committee of North Korea on June twenty-fourth, nineteen forty-six. The labour law for the factory and office workers in North Korea, composed of twenty-six articles, defines the democratic freedom and rights to work and relaxation. What is particularly important in this law is that it stipulates the enforcement of an eight-hour day for the factory and office workers. As a result, the remnants of the Japanese imperialist colonial slave labour, which forced unlimited working hours and harsh labour conditions, were completely liquidated and the road to the new working life was opened. The law prescribes enforcement of a seven-hour day for workers engaged in harmful and underground labour. It bans juvenile labour and puts female workers under special protection. In additions, it stipulates complete abolition of the system of colonial starvation wages, enforcement of regular paid leave for factory and office workers and extra holidays for workers engaged in harmful or dangerous labour and enforcement of social security scheme for factory and office workers like medical assistance for those who were disabled on allowances for funeral services. Establishment of Gender Equality. The Provisional People's Committee of North Korea promulgated the Law on Sex Equality in North Korea on July third, nineteen forty-six. The law proclaimed that the Korean women who were long neglected in society and life in misery, subjected to humiliation and insult, have equal rights with men in all domains of social life, including politics, the economy and culture. First of all, it grants women the same political freedom and rights with men. All women become able to participate in the election of deputies to power organs at all levels with equal rights, with men and enjoy the right to elect and to be elected. It also stipulates that women have equal rights to labour and education with men. Women can enjoy the rights to free marriage and free divorce, love suit against the former husband for the expense of bringing up the children and equal right with men to inherit personal and landed property and the feudal customs of life that trampled upon the rights like polygamy and human trafficking, licenced and unlicenced prostitution and kissing. It is professional entertainer system were abolished. Establishment of Democratic Human Rights System by the Constitutions. The Constitution was adopted in September nineteen forty-eight with the funding of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea. It comprehensively consolidated the democratic freedom and rights which had already been granted to the people by individual laws and regulations. The declaring equal rights of citizens all in all fields of social life in first stipulates in the political field in the right to elect and to be elected, the freedom of speech, the press, assembly, demonstration and association, the rights to organise and join political parties, social and other organisation and the freedom of a religious belief and of holding religious ceremonies. It stipulates the rights of the working people in the sphere of the economic life, the right to be awarded, to be awarded the same return for the same work, the right to material assistance by the social securities scheme and the right to the run small and medium-sized trade and industry. In the field of the social life, it defines the right to the receive compulsory primary education and education at college and universities and at state expense, the right to the enjoy protection of marriage and family, the right to inviolability of the person and the right to complaints and petitions. Proceeding from the principles of internationalism, it prescribes the right of asylum and equal rights of citizens of ethnic minorities. With the adoption of the constitution, the problem of the basic law, the most important question in the human rights system was settled with the credit, the legislative basis for enacting laws and regulations of human rights late and the system could be developed within a well-knit framework. Maintenance of the human rights system in wartime. It is unavoidable, think that in wartime, the paste time system of guaranteeing human rights is abolished or exists in name only. A great number of refugees and orphans there are produced and the people standard of living deteriorates. But during the Korean War nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-three, unleashed by the USA, laws and regulations of ensuring, of ensuring people's rights were stipulate and enforced in succession. With the adoption of the cabinet decision, decision of measure of forgiving relief to war victims and decisions on measures for stabilising the people's livelihood during the Far East Liberation War and other laws and regulations, camps, rest homes and orphanage for accommodating war victims, including orphans, were set up and people were provided with ration houses and all kinds of conveniences through the networks of public catering and commerce. And such... Sorry, I have a problem with my laptop. Just one second, that could be cut off of the recording. Need to find out again because there was this appeal, the problem with laptop, sorry for that. Just looking for... We're gonna back to the same. And such laws and regulation as the cabinet decision of leading foods for ensuring farming to the disaster-stricken peasants and other measures for the providing houses to factory and office workers were also adopted. So as the ensure living and production conditions for the poor and disaster-stricken peasants provide stable jobs to those who become unemployed owing to the war and help the factory and office workers fail, settled in the living. Not only laws and regulation related with stabilising the material life of the people, but also those related with their education and cultural life were also adopted and enforced it.
I would just conclude the section that you were reading. And it says, as a result, no one starved to death and was left homeless and the voice of children reading books rang out continuously, even in the severe trials of war. Now, notice that, I think due to technical problems, a couple of sections were missed, so I will read these. Eleven, Standards of Human Rights in the DPRK. The standards which reflect the people's requirements and aspirations for their rights are human rights standards. And those that are accepted by people are fair and genuine human rights standards. In any country, people demand and realise their rights. They judge and evaluate whether their right situation is good or bad. Human rights standards must be set in accordance with the demands of the people of each country because countries differ from one another in political system, history, customs, the economy, the level of cultural development and the way of life. To set and apply human rights standards in conformity with the quiet requirements of its people and its actual conditions while respecting the human rights standards stipulated in international agreements and the human rights belongs to the sovereignty of every country. Twelve, Establishment of the System of Provision of Human Rights in the DPRK. The system of provision of human rights in the DPRK began to be established after the country was liberated from Japanese imperialism's colonial rule on fifteenth of August nineteen forty-five. Thirteen, disposal of colonial laws that ran counter to human rights. Many countries which had formerly been colonies of imperialists maintained the laws of the colonial days for a certain period or instituted new laws by referring to them. However, just after its liberation from colonial rule, Korea proclaimed that all the laws and regulations which had been enforced under the colonial rule of Japanese imperialism had lost validity forever. And any legal order against the construction of a new society in the interests of the Korean people would not be tolerated. In other words, Korea maintained the principle of abolishing draconian colonial laws and of establishing a new legal system, a new legal order for ensuring people's freedom and rights as required by the building of a new society on the basis of the people's democratic and revolutionary consciousness of law. Fourteen, earliest laws of human rights. Immediately after the liberation, there was no unified central legislative body in Korea. So it was important to set up an apparatus for instituting laws of your human rights and first enhance its functions and role for the establishment of the human rights mechanisms. Hence, various forms of meetings like mass rallies and neighbourhood rallies were held in all parts of the country where people elected their representatives according to their will and organised local power organs. Local power organs thus formed advanced new people-oriented and democratic policies for establishing new democratic legal order and adopted and executed decisions, directives and proclamations and other legal documents aimed at carrying out these policies. Fifteen, democratisation of the judicial system in Korea is, was an undertaking to thoroughly destroy the outdated judicial system which serves the realisation of Japanese imperialist colonial rule and build a people-oriented and revolutionary one which would defend the rights and interests of the people. With the setting up of the Judiciary Bureau in November nineteen forty-five and the ten administrative bureaus of North Korea, regulations on organising public prosecutor's offices and courts at all levels according to the administrative system were framed and the second trial system was applied in the court and the system of people's assessors was enforced. After the establishment of the Provisional People's Committee of North Korea in February nineteen forty-six, the democratisation of the judicial system was promoted still further. Different laws and regulations were enacted and enforced, including the basic principles on the composition and functions of the court and public prosecutor's office under the Judiciary Bureau of the Provisional People's Committee of North Korea, regulations and criminal procedures by the judicial organs of North Korea and the decision of the, on the election of judges. Thus, the basis for a democratic judicial system that would provide rights and freedom for the people and firmly guarantee the building of a new society was laid in a short span of time after liberation. Sixteen, Establishment of a Democratic Electoral Law System. In Korea, a democratic election law system was established with the enactment and enforcement by the Provisional People's Committee of North Korea of laws related with the elections of deputies to local and central power organs. These laws comprehensively stipulated all the norms for ensuring a democratic election, including the fundamental principles of election procedure of making voters list procedure of election procedure of confirming its results. Important features of these laws are that they are codified, that they, they codify the principles of the democratic election by means of universal, equal and direct suffrage by secret ballot and took the voters' convenience into maximum consideration. With the establishment of such democratic election system, ninety-nine point six percent of voters took part in the elections of deputies to power organs for the first time after liberation and in the election of deputies to the central power organ in February nineteen forty-seven, two hundred and thirty-seven deputies from all walks of life, including thirty-four women... seven entrepreneurs, ten merchants, four handicraftsmen and ten clergymen were elected. Thanks to the establishment of a democratic election system. A firm legal guarantee was provided for the Korean people to exercise their political rights to the full with state power in their hands, so that that brings us up to all the uh uh all the uh uh sec-sections, so we've we've got up to uh section uh uh section twenty one one and we will resume from from there and yeah, sorry about the problem with your your computer. Uh Alan.
Yeah, yeah, you know what, I'm sorry, I can't do nothing because
Yeah, I know.
It's just scrolling down.
Yeah, can't be helped. Uh, luckily, I I noticed that, so anyway, we we, you know, we've got to section twenty one. I mean, before I I set the questions, I just I like you like to say, I found the the above study very interesting and it's an interesting fact that in the DPRK judges are actually elected and people's assessors are elected. Uh, because this is something uh doesn't happen in capitalist countries in Britain. How judges are appointed is a complete mystery. Uh, it's a mysterious process, but they're certainly not elected, they they are selected. Now, before I just read out the listed questions that I've written, uh, does anyone want to raise their own question or comment about the uh the above that we've we've been reading out? Yes, please go ahead, Jeremy.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I think it is um that what the US claims um that um all the DPRK do so much human right abuse and blah, 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 we all know the propaganda. Uh, it's um such a double standard. The USA have the worst human rights record of every country in the world. They talk about um or the DPRK, the people get arrested without any, you know, then doing anything. That's what happened in the DPRK, that's happening in the USA. And Americans are doing it with citizens even of other countries. They put people into the Guantanamo torture prison, which they have in occupied area of a foreign states and occupy a foreign state to build torture prisons there. And then um and for any reason, keeping the people from minority from Muslims. But we already read that it's very important that minorities are not discriminated. But the USA is doing exactly that, also with the black people. The police in the USA, they're shooting black people for other reason. If you look at the USA media, they say, oh, the DPRK, there are executions, blah, blah. It's the USA were executing black people just because they're black. If you're a black man on the street and the police don't like you, they just shoot you and if a video of that doesn't go viral in ninety nine of one hundred cases, nothing happens. And even if it goes viral, often nothing happens. So um the USA should rather look at their own human rights record instead of always pointing the fingers at others. If they point um one finger at others, they're pointing three fingers at themselves at the same time.
Thank you, Jeremy, for your remarks, I think. That's all very true, now I I was going to mention, yes, a few years ago, a black man called George Floyd was killed in a most horrible way by the American police, you know, he was he was, I think, choked or smothered to death by by an American, a white American policeman, terrible. Uh, absolutely terrible thing to happen. And when I was interviewed by uh uh, the the journalist, you know, on last Tuesday. Uh, you know, this uh thing about the DPRK allegedly having a forced labor was thrown thrown at me. And the fact is, the US has the biggest prison population in the world, they've got more prisoners than any other country, and you got a huge number of people in prison. And they actually use forced labor in US prisons. Uh, there's actually a prison industrial complex in the USA. And is that actually they make a lot of money out of prison labor in in the US, which is really, really a form of slavery, but you know, they make these accusations against people's career, which is is totally diabolical, okay, uh, yeah. Yes, I agree with the the comment in the chat by Comrade AA. A country that allows systemic racism, poverty and police killings cannot claim to be the beacon of human rights, yes, that's very true, okay. Are there any other comments or questions before I I be teacher and set some questions for people to answer? No more questions or comments, okay. So I've set, I'll put them in in the chat, just in case people don't hear. Question one, what is the DPRK's view on human rights? Question two, how does the DPRK view on human rights differ from Western and bourgeois concepts of human rights? Question three, how did the DPRK deal with colonial laws? And just one more question, see if I got it. Question four, what did the DPRK do to ensure human rights in wartime? Here we are, so all the questions are down, uh, put down in the chat. Uh, so I don't know who wants to go first in in answering the questions.
Okay, um, can I answer the quest first?
Yes, yes, of course, yes.
So um the DPRK used that the human rights, uh, on the human rights is that human rights are not only the human rights of individuals like it's often seen in the West, you know, in the West, you have freedom for enterprise and blah, 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 so basically freedom and human rights in the West means uh, freedom of the capitalist to exploit the worker and working masses. And DPRK, the human rights are not only the human rights of the individual, but also of the collective and the nation, no, human rights cannot be forced upon a nation. You can't bomb human rights and nations into a nation, although the USA claim to do that. The human rights are, um, every human has, um, has, um, uh independence as a key feature of them, that's a key feature of humans as a social being. And to realize that one nation has to be independent, no.
Right, thank you very much, Jeremy, I think that is all absolutely correct, does anyone else want to sort of give give answers before I I read out the answers I've given? Yes, please go ahead, Comrade AA, please do indeed say something.
Do you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you clearly.
All right, and the question is quite deep and then, you know, for people like us to understand the comprehensive holistic view of DPRK is, you know, and on human right and then it it would take more time, but we have got to dissect in every little thing your DPR has done wonderfully. But given the time constraint, all I could say is like, you know, United States, especially America, human rights is just a mask. It's a mask for class domination and a very, very brutal, you know, systemic, you know, and human rights violations. That that's a basic, so DPRK focuses only on working masses, working people, women, children, everyone. Based on their creativity and their, you know, willingness and political will to contribute to the country, so DPRK deep down understands very, very well in any socialist sense, the the right of the collective. It has got to thrive fast, when it thrives, you know, and everyone, each and everyone is included. But that that kind of like a phenomenal transformative change is a little bit too refined for the rest of all our nations to understand. That's why DPRK has been trashed and given bad names because it's because of their ignorance. So actually DPRK human rights mean real freedom from capitalist oppression, that's a basic lie. So it's not, so by doing that, you know, and it doesn't give anyone or any organization, any institution, the freedom to exploit others within their same national boundary. But in other countries, they allow institutions to exploit others, so they are talking about human rights, so to sum up, DPRK human rights is like every meaningful human rights, you know, is granted for the people by building its socialism, beautiful socialism, so human rights is in some way the fight for socialism. That's that's my thought, DPRK has been doing this beautifully.
No, thank you very much, totally agree with those comments, I think very good. Uh, yeah, I mean, one reason why we sort of only sort of studying ten or twenty uh, sections in each session is because this this is very profound. Uh, and, you know, there's there's a lot to absorb, to take in and to understand, so we we're doing it in uh, chunks of, you know, ten to twenty sections in each session, I mean, we could perhaps probably read through the the whole book in one session or half the book in one session, but I I think that wouldn't lead to any particularly deep understanding. Uh, so, you know, we're doing it this way. Uh, and then when we complete the book, we we can, we probably move on to another book in this this excellent series, the Understanding Korea series. Uh, so I'm going to read out how I've answered these questions. Uh, what is the DPRK's view of human rights and my answer is the DPRK views that human rights are the rights of man to independence, that the masses of people are the personification of human rights and human rights are the rights of a nation, you cannot uh, separate the, you know, two. Uh, moreover, the DPRK recognizes that independence is the uh, intrinsic inherent nature of man. Uh, independence is defined as an attribute of the social being to live and develop independently as the master of the world and his own destiny. Independence is the life and soul of man, a social being. Only when independence is ensured can man enjoy life and happiness proper to him and have true dignity and value in his social existence. Question two, how does the DPRK view on human rights differ from Western and bourgeois concepts of human rights? Well, the DPRK has a fundamentally different view on human rights in contrast to those advocated by imperialist nations. Firstly, DPRK stated above stresses national independence, without national independence, there can be no human rights. Secondly, it sees basic rights such as the right to work and the right to housing as most important. Without these, uh, the, uh, there cannot be other human rights, these are you know, the bread and butter of human rights, as it were. Thirdly, I think this is a very clear difference and which other people have stressed in their answers. Uh, Western countries put a lot of emphasis on individualism at the expense of the collective, they ignore collective rights and typical of this was the Declaration of the Rights of Man and the Citizen that was adopted in France on August twenty seventh seventeen eighty nine. And the Declaration of Independence adopted in the US on the fourth of July seventeen seventy six. Question three, how did the DPRK deal with colonial laws? And I always found this a very interesting question because in fact, a lot of countries that had been former colonies of the imperialists, particularly, I think, some of the ex-British colonies uh, actually maintained colonial uh, laws for a period of time after independence, in fact, in some cases for a very long period of time. And you've also got South Korea, uh, which actually copied some laws of Japanese colonialism, such as the national security law. However, in people's career, uh, after its liberation from colonial rule. It was proclaimed that all laws and regulations that have been enforced under the colonial rule, Japanese imperialism had lost validity forever. And any legal order against the construction of a new society in interest of the Korean people would not be tolerated, in other words. People's Korea maintained the principle of completely abolishing draconian colonial laws and of establishing a new legal system, a new legal order for ensuring people's freedom and rights as required by the building of a new society on the basis of people's democratic and revolutionary consciousness of law. And finally, question four. What did the DPRK do to ensure human rights in wartime? Well. Uh, a number of measures were adopted such as the decision on giving relief to war victims and decision on measures for stabilizing people's livelihood. during wartime. And also they established camps, rest homes, orphanages and a sort of network to supply food and for catering. They took measures to ensure living conditions for poor and disaster-stricken peasants to provide jobs for anyone who'd lost their job through the war. And other measures were taken to stabilize people's material and cultural lives. As a result, no one starved to death or was left homeless during the Fatherland Liberation War. And the voice of children reading books rang out continuously, even in, in those days of war. So that's, that's the answers. Don't know if anybody else has any other question or comment. Okay, well, if there's no comment, what we do is we will show a eighteen-minute-long video about human rights in the D P R K and then conclude. And I would point out, we've got a number of events coming up. We've got another film light on March thirty first. We have an online meeting to commemorate President Kim Il-sung's anniversary, birth anniversary on the twelfth of April. And we'll be having another of these sessions on the seventeenth of April. So I'll just find the video in a minute. And just read this comment out. In the D P R K, human rights are equal to freedom from capitalist oppression, not freedom to exploit others. The D P R K already smashed formal bourgeois rights. The D P R K's human rights are practical solutions of the material conditions for real freedom, freedom from hunger, homelessness and capitalist exploitation. Here, here, that's, that's a very good statement. I mean, yes, freedom from capitalistic oppression, freedom not to live in a capitalist society is actually a very important and fundamental human right. Okay, I'll just wait. George is typing something, so we'll just... What? Oh, yes. Well, thank you very much, George, for reminding me this. Thank you for your solidarity. Solidarity from K F A Greece, supporting K F A UK from censorship. Yeah, thanks for that support. I don't want to sort of say too much about this as I think we said a lot about it online. But on the fourth of March, Google deleted the YouTube channel that we had, a standalone YouTube channel, which we were using to show different videos from the D P R K, real D P R K content. And that was taken down by YouTube. At the same time, they deleted the email address that we used to send regular email bulletins to members and were still also deleted or denied me access to a lot of documents we had on Google Docs, including a book that I was writing. I lost two months of work as a result of that. Google have been asked about four or five times, you know, you know, if they're not willing to restore fully the account, could we have the documents back? Haven't even replied to me. It's absolutely disgusting. It's an absolute disgrace on the part of Google. And now we, we've started another Google email address only to find that we're blocked from sending emails. It's absolutely diabolical. You know, so much for all these people who talk about blah, 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 human rights, freedom and democracy. You know, they need to, they need to practice it themselves before they, they lecture the D P R K about it. It's absolutely, an absolute disgrace. And it's funny how some YouTube channels are left alone, but other genuine pro D P R K channels started up by activists are targeted and shut down or channels actually from the D P R K itself. Because people, some people here will remember, there were several channels, you know, one with the girl student from the university, you know, I think that's about four years ago. And also the young, very, very young girl school student, Miss Song A. That channel was deleted. But, you know, some so-called influencers and pundits, who aren't real friends of the D P R K at all, their, their channels are left alone by, by Google. I mean, isn't that strange? But again, thank K F A Greece for their solidarity and also for K F A Germany, because they, they issued a very good statement, which we publicized. And of course, the People's Korea Initiative of Poland did so. So thanks for solidarity, George. And hopefully, I might even meet you at the K F A International Meeting in Spain in November, you know, which is something to look forward to. Okay, so I don't know if Jeremy is able to help with streaming the video, but we just showed this, this video for for a bit. It's...
I can发到你，yes. Just send the link and...
Have you got the link?
Thank you. One moment.
Thank you.
Can you see?
I can see. Well, I don't know about other people.
Socialist based, the Democratic People's Republic of Korea's socialism is the people-centered socialism, that is, Tucci-oriented socialism, which puts forward the masses of the people as the most precious beings and in which everything serves them. President Kim Il-sung said, "Our country is socialist based on the popular masses. In our country, the people's individuality and their rights to independence are respected and protected substantially." In the Democratic People's Republic of Korea, a genuine system for guaranteeing people's rights is established under which all the people exercise their rights and freedoms to the full. In the D P R K, the people's political rights are provided fully and preferentially. Everyone is provided with the right to elect and to be elected, and this is guaranteed by several laws and regulations, including the socialist constitution of the D P R K. The elected deputies are the working people, like workers, farmers and intellectuals, who work devotedly for the independent rights and interests of the voters. Ninety-nine point nine seven percent of the total voters participated in the election to the thirteenth Supreme People's Assembly held on March ninth, two thousand fourteen. And one hundred percent of them casted their votes for the deputies. Every citizen has the right to freely express his or her opinions and thoughts through various mass media and is provided with the right to literary work and creative activities. Freedom of assembly and demonstration is provided and freedom of organization and activities is legally guaranteed for democratic political parties and social organizations. Anyone with a certain level of knowledge and abilities has the right to freely participate in the state's administration as a civil servant. The people are provided with the right to freely choose and believe in ideology and religion. The Tucci idea, which thoroughly defends and champions the people's independence, guarantees genuine people's rights. The Korean people believe in the Tucci idea and think and behave as required by this idea. Unlike the propaganda by the Western mass media, the freedom of religion is fully provided. There are different religious organizations in the D P R K and their activities are fully guaranteed by law. Foreigners visiting or staying in the D P R K enjoy the freedom of religious belief. Citizens' rights, like physical and mental rights and right to property, are fully guaranteed under the law in the D P R K. In the D P R K, where men's independence is considered as his life and soul, prostitution, human trafficking, forced labor and child labor never exist. In the D P R K, the rights to economic activities and economic life are fully guaranteed for the people. All the citizens who have reached the age for labor are entitled to choose their jobs according to their wishes and skills, irrespective of sex, nationality and social affiliation. And they are provided with stable jobs and working conditions according to the socialist labor law of the D P R K. As the right to labor is fully provided, labor is regarded as being noble and honorable. And the working people work with voluntary enthusiasm and creativity for the prosperity of the country, the people's welfare and their own happiness. Under the direct concern and care of the party and the state and their people-oriented policies, the people enjoy the right to be fully provided with satisfactory living standards. Continuously improving the people's standard of material and economic life is the supreme principle of the activities of the Workers' Party of Korea and the state. Ordinary people are provided with palatial dwelling houses free of charge. This is an advantage of the D P R K's socialism that capitalism can neither imitate nor imagine. The Democratic People's Republic of Korea fully ensures the social and cultural rights of the people aimed at satisfying their cultural and emotional needs. All the people learned their hearts' content under the benefit of the free secondary general education. And this benefit reaches even those children in remote mountainous regions and far-flung islands. The higher education is also free of charge and the students receive scholarships from the state and those who are studying while working receive a service salary. The state pays a special concern for creating conditions and environment conducive to fully providing the right to education. All the working people are provided with the rights to scientific research and cultural and emotional life. Everyone conducts free literary work or creative activities and intellectual property rights are protected by law. Those who have made outstanding contributions to the development of science and technology receive awards like honorary title and bonus. Many modern cultural recreation grounds, establishments for cultural and emotional life, cultural and welfare facilities and sports facilities have been built recently in many parts of the country. The happy images of the working people enjoying civilized cultural and emotional life to their hearts' content in these places show the bright future of the D P R K's socialism. in these places show the bright future of the DPRK's socialism. The people prevent diseases and protect their health under the benefit of the universal free medical care system and the preventive medical system. DPRK, where the people are considered as the most precious beings, all medical treatments and services ranging from medical examination to dispensing medicine are free. All the citizens enjoy their right to good health, receiving comfortable medical treatment in modern hospitals without paying any doctor's fee or charge for medicine. In the DPRK, where everything serves the people, the unique section doctor system is established to prevent diseases and promote the working people's health. Doctors conduct preventive treatment, visiting and taking care of the people in their charge all the time. This can be found only in the DPRK, where the state takes responsible care of the people's health from cradle to grave. In the DPRK, where everyone enjoys equal rights, the right for specific groups like women and children is fully ensured. Gender equality being realised long before, women are provided with equal status and rights with men under law. Women enjoying the rights to elect and to be elected freely and actively take part in the election and the state's administration. They take part in worthwhile labour, enjoying preferential treatments like paid maternity leave. Particularly pregnant women receive regular medical check-up and treatment and enjoy various state benefits for their health after delivery. These are just parts of the rights women of the DPRK enjoy. In the DPRK, where children are regarded as kings, every child is provided with equal rights. The children give full play to their wishes and talents, enjoying free education and free medical treatment irrespective of the sex, positions of their parents or guardians, property status and physical defect. Trains, ships and buses run even for few schoolchildren. There are branch schools for a few children in mountain villages and far-flung islands. Vickers carrying Siberian milk run for school across streets. And all schoolchildren receive school uniforms and school things free of charge. All these tell that the children in the DPRK are the happiest in the world. The government of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea follows it as the state policy to respect the elderly and take responsible care of their life and health and provides them with a civilized and happy life. At the modern Pyongyang Rest Home built under the warm affection and care of respected Kim Jong-un, the elderly spend the rest of their life within comfort. And those who are over one hundred years enjoy benefits bestowed by the state like birthday sprays. In the DPRK, people with disabilities are provided with the rights, freedom and interests equally with the healthy people, with their personality being respected. June the eighteenth is designated as the Day of People with Disabilities. And on this day every year, activities to better protect and help people with disabilities are carried out socially. And according to the principle of protecting these people, they are provided with the rights to medical treatment, education, labour and cultural life. In particular, those who devotedly serve the country and the people, like honorary disabled access service personnel, are recorded preferential treatment socially. The DPRK's socialism is the most superior and people-centered socialism, which provides the people with full and thorough going rights.
Right, thank you very much, Jeremy, for streaming that video, which I think is a very uh good video and helps to uh supplement the earlier reading session and expand on, actually expand on points uh made in it. Um I'm sorry if some people missed the actual reading session. I think this is one of the problems with operating across time zones. It seems to be been confusion over time today with some people joining the the event an hour early and others uh missing the start and indeed missing most of the session and joining late, but never, never mind. I'll just wait for Comrade AA to uh uh put her comment in the chat and then we we will conclude for for the day. We're going to have another session on the seventeenth of April. That will be an evening session rather than a Saturday afternoon. And we're going to have the film night on the thirty-first and a meeting, an online meeting on the twelfth of April. And also for anyone in London, a real-life meeting on the fifth of April. Just while I wait for the economy, um the comment to come through. So also, I think perhaps people might have got confused, uh because in two weeks' time, uh the UK switches time, we we're going over to British summertime. I think on the twenty ninth of March. So I think that might be causing a, might cause confusion. I'll just read the comment. Singaporean company has opened a high-end private hospital in China. Oh dear, this week, the first joint of privatised healthcare in China. China no longer cares to have a reserved face. Long-lived DPRK health system and everything it has built for the masses. Thank, thanks for teaching. Well, you're you're welcome and thank you for participating. And yeah, we're, like you said, we'll have another session and I hope we can get more people to participate next time. I thank everybody for their participation in the session. I wish you all a very good, good day and see you all again soon. Goodbye, comrades.